We are kicking off free general admission for everybody here in Los Angeles and beyond, and we're having a great festival all day to celebrate with our community. Our board president Carolyn Clark-Powers made an announcement in late May. She gave a gift of $10 million to make this possible for Moca to offer free general admission for everybody.
This is huge for the city. We know that access to art is everything. When a young person, or a visitor, or somebody who's even lived a couple blocks away knows that it is free, we find that admission goes up, that the richness of experience moves forward, and LA is the art capital of the world right now.
Now that they're making it more accessible for people to come, and the fact that they're not charging is amazing for people that, you know, like, say, like, this is something that's great. You get to learn, you get to be a part of the experience without having to, you know, spend money and stuff. It's going to bring a lot more people in, and I think that's really important.
No longer is there an excuse for people not to come to Moca. It is free every day. The permanent collection is free. We offer tours. There are free art-making activities for kids, you know, during the month. Check out Moca.org and see what we have to offer.
I agree, Mayor Garcetti. Access to art is everything. In fact, the Central Library has an art exhibit where you can actually leave your own personal impression. The exhibit is called "The Autograph Book," and our own Saieda Pagon dropped by to make her mark.
It's an autograph collection like no other at the Los Angeles Central Library. Hundreds of signatures, artwork, and writings from both the famous and everyday people dating back more than a century.
One of my favorites came in from a library patron, and they wrote, "I just want to be a part of it," which sort of sums up the sentiment of some of these people who are leaving their marks in the collection.
Curators say it was all librarian Charles Loomis's idea. In 1906, he sent out this letter with blank stationery. He instructed notable people of the day to simply improve this enclosed page. Educator Booker T. Washington wrote back. Writer and activist Helen Keller also responded, and Langston Hughes sent in a poem. Catherine Lee Bates filled the page with the words to her song "America the Beautiful." But since then, the collection has become much more inclusive. People from all walks of life have sent in their autographs, their writings, and more.
What's really special about the exhibit is the way that it was expanded by the foundation and the city librarian to include modern Angelenos and current people who are doing things.
There is street art on display, graffiti replicated from the streets of Los Angeles, and images telling compelling, thought-provoking stories. This one rare exhibit features thousands of signatures presented to the astronauts after the moon landing. The exhibit also includes a book. It is simply titled "The Autograph Book of L.A."
I feel like it helps people leave their mark on history. It's a way that a person can individually show their mark on something.
I think it's actually nice, really, because, like I was saying earlier, it's just nice to see, like, not only the people that have come through the library, or like, the autographs that have been, like, put down on paper, but also just like the development of, like, writing, actually.
Only the main highlights of the collection are included in the library exhibit. Hundreds of other pieces are housed in the rare book section of the L.A. Central Library.
I thought it would be fun to add my name to the collection, so here's what I wrote. "I'm here at the L.A. Central Library doing a very fun story about a wonderful autograph collection. Saieda Pagon, for L.A. This Week."
And there's another book arts exhibit happening at the Central Library. The Coretta Scott King Awards was established to recognize exceptional work from new African-American authors and illustrators. Anna Marcos visited the library to see how these works are now a celebrated visual art exhibit.
African-American children's book authors and illustrators haven't always had their voices heard in mainstream literature, but this exhibit celebrates 50 years of putting those voices front and center.
So many times, our stories are not told, and so individual, children may grow up and never see themselves in the pages of books, and it's important for them to see themselves reflected in that manner and to be proud of who they are.
The L.A. Public Library is hosting the exhibit called Voices, celebrating the Coretta Scott King Illustrator Awards. The artwork comes from books that have won the prestigious award. It highlights both books and illustrations by exceptional storytellers of the African-American experience. Two determined librarians created the awards back in 1969 after attending an American Library Association conference and getting a sort of a wake-up call.
African-American authors were not recognized over the years, and this was in 1969, and that's how the Coretta Scott King Award came about, to recognize outstanding authors and illustrators of children's literature, African-Americans.
The first one I saw was the illustration of Rosa Parks, which made me think about the struggles and how different things were not that long ago.
The exhibit features more than 100 prize-winning book illustrations. The topics range from slavery to African creation myths to hairstyles.
For instance, Crown is one of the most recent titles, and it shows an African-American young boy after he gets his hair done, and how his self-esteem is boosted, and so that's really important for young people to see as well.
There is even a little cubbyhole children's reading area stocked with some of the award-winning books. So what are college students doing reading children's books in a circle? We wanted to know.
The illustrations are beautiful, and I want to do children's book illustrations, so I love seeing these, and they're so well-done. But yeah, they had this really cool page right here, and it just, like, folds out, and it shows, like, the whole team of the first colored World Series.
For me personally, growing up, being African-American, I didn't have any books with, like, kids that looked like me. Even reading this book about a young musician, it was really powerful because I felt like I really had to pave my way to become a musician when I was 10 years old.
The exhibit will be on display at the L.A. Public Library's downtown branch until February 9.
Do you remember home economics or shop class when you were in high school? Well, things have really changed since then. Maria Hall Brown gives us a look at an organization doing great work on vocational skills. Maria?
Thanks, Umeema. I had an opportunity to sit down with the folks from Skills USA, a remarkable organization that have been helping youth find their way for decades. In this ever-changing, complicated world, for a young person determining what they want to be when they grow up is also partnered with who they want to be and how to get there. But fortunately, there's a wonderful organization to help. I'm delighted to be joined by Clay Mitchell, the state director of Skills USA. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure, Maria.
All right. Skills USA obviously has a vast array of things that they offer young people in determining, you know, what course they want to take in their lives. What does Skills USA do?
So Skills USA is a career technical student organization, so that's a nice education jargon that talks about how do we help students make quality decisions for careers, and what do they need to do to get there so they can be successful in life? People from business and industries that are looking for our products, which are our students, come to an event. The California event is about 3,200 students, and the national event is about 8,000 students. They come in, they have their time slot, and they perform whatever skill or task that they have set up from business and industry with their knowledge and their skill set.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by Loretta Cabaludal, who is the state membership and chapter coordinator. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so what is it that you say to people, or young people, or parents, or anyone that might be interested now in being part of Skills USA?
Whenever I have the opportunity to talk to a student's parent or guardian, I like to celebrate that their student has chosen this as a path. In most cases, you hear college is that direction, and when a student says that I want to be a carpenter, or I want to be a chef, I celebrate that.
There's such a huge need. I mean, I think we forget all of the things that we need in order to have, you know, a good life and good lifestyles.
There's such a huge need, especially here in California. There's a big skills gap, and we want to lead the way in bridging that.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by an alum of Skills USA, and a very talented one at that, Brian Glisby. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Just fine.
So you're, as an alum, you went straight out of one of the programs into a full-time gig in broadcasting, which you have been enormously successful in.
I learned about instant replay. I learned about maintenance repair. I learned about the cameras. I learned, and then I went on to become one of the supervisors over at Fox on Fox Sports. The message really is, you got to learn it from the ground up. There's no easy way to do it.
If you want to learn more about Skills USA, it's really easy. You just log on to SkillsUSA.ca.org.
Skills USA has been guiding students' growth to more productive and successful careers since 1965. Show your love at a carnival in Skid Row, indulge in a day of donut delicacies, and discover the best-kept secret in used book thrifting. All this and more and things to do. The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cards, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out L.A.'s Sweetest Weekend Bash at Donut Fest L.A., brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday-Thunderday filled with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados calling all book sale sleuths, K.Y.A. and urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every Fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Umeema Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. You could do something about it by volunteering for the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Sign up at TheyCountLULU.org because everyone counts, no matter where they live.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 22nd, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenfield Bonn and Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Corretts, Kocorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Lee moves, and Mr. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Blumenfield moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next. Members, we are going to direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through that.
Items one through seven are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item two has been posted, circulated, and is now before council. There is a request to hold item two and three on the desk.
Hold item two and three. Members, are there any specials? Mr. Lee?
Item three, I need to recuse myself.
You need to recuse yourself on item three. That will be noted. Any other specials, members? Let's go ahead and vote on the...
Madam President, I need to recuse myself from item two.
Okay, Mr. Price, we'll recuse ourselves on item two. Those two items are being held anyway, so let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, what's next?
Items eight through forty-two are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are before us. Are there any cards on these items?
Yes. There are cards on twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen...
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, sorry, they just came over.
Nineteen through twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven...
Twenty-four and twenty-five, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty should be held on the desk, as well as thirty-one, and there are cards on thirty-two through thirty-seven, and there is also cards on forty-one.
So it looks like there's cards on all of them. Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Mr. Bonn?
I'd like to continue item twenty for one week, please.
Okay, item twenty.
That would be, sir, January twenty-ninth. Twenty is continued to January twenty-ninth.
Actually, could we continue it till the Friday after that? I guess that'd be the thirty-first.
Yes, so twenty is continued to January thirty-first.
Thank you.
Without objection? So ordered, what's next, Madam Clerk?
That means items eight through eleven, as well as twenty-eight, and thirty-eight through forty, and forty-two may be voted on, Madam President.
Now, let's go ahead and keep going. Madam Clerk, all these items have cards.
Okay, moving on, forty-three through forty-seven are items for closed session.
Okay, we're gonna hold those on the desk until we get Mr. Kocorian to get here. Just move on.
Madam President, that takes council to items called special, public comment, or presentations.
Mr. Rue, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Today is a special day, and we have a huge contingency, great Todd, because today we are here to recognize those on the front lines of community health and well-being, as well as celebrate an incredible investment in these community healthcare leaders. These folks that you see here are the folks that you see when you seek help for your child's learning disability, for your partner's post-traumatic stress disorder, or when your family is facing food insecurity. Today, we're honoring 12 community-based organizations who are doing incredible work to address our mental health epidemic, to the lack of healthy foods in underserved communities, and to promote healthy living. Millions of Americans are affected by mental illness every year, and every single one of us knows someone who has struggled with either a mental illness or have even struggled ourselves. Additionally, it is estimated that over 2 million Angelinos live with food insecurity and don't have access to healthy foods. When we need help for ourselves or for our family and friends, the folks behind me, who we are honoring today, are the people that we turn to. I've spent the majority of my career working in the nonprofit world and in healthcare, and I know firsthand how powerful these connections can be. Our healthcare system is still far too complex, far too expensive, and often shuts out the most vulnerable communities that need our help the most. And that's where the nonprofit, community-based organizations step in. And today, I am so excited that Blue Shield of California Promise Health Plan is awarding $1.1 million to support these local organizations. Having worked for various nonprofits, I can tell you that one of the biggest challenges that they face is funding. And in our city, where we have hundreds of incredible community organizations performing life-saving work for the members of our society who are often too often overlooked or forgotten, but you can't help keep someone afloat if you can't keep yourself afloat. That's where this $1.1 million comes in. This $1.1 million is not just about helping incredible nonprofits. This $1.1 million is about... Is... Oh, is in line with council president and our city council's Family First Agenda. It is about supporting families. It's about lifting up vulnerable communities, and it's about building... It's about the building blocks to homeless prevention. Because homelessness is not just a housing issue. It's not just a healthcare issue. It's also a poverty issue, and it's an issue of underserved communities and often broken social safety nets. So among other things, we are trying to do here is homeless prevention. And this donation from Blue Shield will help these organizations help our communities and keep working families from falling through the cracks. So let's hear it for Blue Shield. Now, to hear a few words from Blue Shield, I'd like to welcome Todd Walhall, a Blue Shield Senior Executive.
Todd, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Thank you, City Council. We are pleased and honored to accept this recognition. Blue Shield of California is a nonprofit health plan that serves over 4 million Californians. In Los Angeles alone, we serve 1.1 million members here. Our mission is to provide access to affordable healthcare to all Californians. And internally, within Blue Shield of California, we like to say "healthcare worthy of family and friends." Now, "family and friends" starts in your community, and without investment in the community, all Californians, all folks in Los Angeles could not have access to opportunity. So we are pleased to donate $1.1 million to these community-based organizations because they do good work. They do great work. They work with families. They work with communities. They provide health and well-being, both physical and mental. But most importantly, they guide folks and they give them a path to opportunity, and that is what we are all about. And so, thank you for the recognition. Thank you again, Councilman Rue. I turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. And I get a $1.1 million donation for your 1.1 million insured. So does that mean if we increase those who are insured under Blue Shield, we're gonna expect maybe $1.5, $2 million next year? So, thank you, Todd. But before I introduce the next speaker, I do want to list and to recognize the 12 organizations that we are honoring today and that are receiving this $1.1 million in grants, and that is the California Community Foundation, the Boys and Girls Club of Metro L.A., the Center for Pacific Asian Families, where I served as a board member in the past, Community Coalition, L.A. Food Bank, Partners in Care Foundation, Southside Coalition, Special Needs Network Center, Stop the Violence Increase the Peace Foundation, Success in Challenges, the Guidance Center, and the Urban Peace Institute. Let's give it up for these 12 organizations. Now, I want to bring up two individuals from the organizations to speak, and the first person, it is my honor to introduce a friend and someone I've had the pleasure to work with for many years in the past, and that's the president of Special Needs Network, and that's Ariva Martin. Ariva.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rue, and I just have to say, I've been here and I've had the opportunity to speak before City Council because of invitations from my good friend Councilmember Price, and Councilmember Wesson, and Councilmember Harris Dawson. But I am super, super excited to be here today because we have a woman sitting as president of this body, and I just want to give it up for my friend Nuri Martinez, and say it is an honor to be here today to speak on behalf of Special Needs Network and to speak at a time when you have made family first a priority for this council, and that's what Special Needs Network has been doing for the last 14 years, is working on behalf of families in South Los Angeles. And I couldn't be prouder to stand with Blue Shield of California Promise Health Plan and these other 11 nonprofit organizations because it is the investment that Blue Shield has made into Special Needs Network and our state-of-the-art autism clinic that will be opening fall of this year on the campus of MLK Hospital that is going to serve thousands of kids who have special needs throughout the county of Los Angeles. The work that we do through Special Needs Network, the center that we're opening, wouldn't be possible without the kind of financial investment from Blue Shield of California. So thank you for investing in Special Needs Network. Thank you for investing in families. Thank you for investing in communities. And thank you, most importantly, for not just talking the talk, but walking the walk and investing in communities that make a difference in this city throughout the county and the city. And we know, in South Los Angeles, we know at Special Needs Network that our health is our wealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariva. And if she looks familiar, it's because she's one of the TV commentaries that you often see on CNN and all the different networks. And next, it's my pleasure to introduce someone who is also representing an organization that is really intertwined with many of us here on the council, and that is the president and CEO of Community Coalition, Alberto Retana.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here you are. Thank you so much. Good morning, Council. Thank you so much for having us here. We're very, very honored and excited to be standing up here with our 11 other partners and especially with Blue Shield for the work that they're doing to point out that health is not just a care system that needs to be managed for our folks, but is actually looking into the community and thinking about the ultimate outcome that we're trying to achieve, which is wellness, which is joy, which is equity and justice. An investment in our community, an investment in community-based organizations, an investment in the most marginalized communities is a reassurance that we're doing the right work in California, and hopefully, a reassurance of the work that we need to continue to do together on that side of the dais and on this side of the microphone. One good example of how that took place this year was an investment in a project that Community Coalition did in deep partnership with Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson, known as the Community Safety Initiative, which did a lot of work to build safe passages, did a lot of work to reimagine justice and safety in the community. And one particular thing that we did that we were very proud of is we held over 100 healing circles involving over 1,300 people every week for eight weeks. At least every healing circle had 20 people, gang members, former gang members, parents, youth, involved in having conversations about what we need to do to keep our community safe, what we need to do to keep our children safe, what we need to do to stay as a community together. I'm talking about Black and Brown folks in particular coming together in a time when this country is dividing us apart. So Blue Shield's investment in understanding that putting community first is a key part of quality healthcare and is an example for all of us to follow, and I hope that we can all just applaud the president, Bukeart, and others at Blue Shield for doing the great work into understanding that these investments do matter. So thank you all for the recognition so much.
Madam President, before I present, is there anybody on cue?
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Rue, who chairs our city council's work around health and mental health, for bringing this presentation to our council. Every year, you bring us something on community health, and today, this is a big one. Congratulations to you, Blue Shield, for meeting the right people, making the right connections, and making what I think are really good investments that pay huge dividends to our city. It's said, it's estimated that every time there's a homicide in this city, it costs the city about $1.8 million in dollars. The cost to our families, the cost of disruption, the cost of the loss of peace is much greater than that. And your investment in the Community Safety Initiative and all of the work around the Community Safety Partnership, funding the Peace Institute that I see just behind you, all of that work results in less homicides. And so, it's less on the city's financial ledger, but more importantly, to our peace, to our tranquility, and to who we are as a city. So I thank you for those investments to, again, all of the organizations. Our good friend, Ariva Martin, there's no greater champion for special needs children anywhere in the United States, and so we appreciate you for lifting up their work. There's Locke High School. I see Increase the Peace Foundation, the great Khalid Shaw there. All of that work, people, everyday people on the ground doing the work to make this city a livable place and a place where we can live out and up to our potential. And I can't go without recognizing the executive director of Community Coalition, who's really lifted that organization up after its last executive director. We... Yeah, to a new level. We really appreciate your investment in our city and our organizations, our people that do the work. And so, thank you and congratulations to you, Mr. Rue, for bringing such a great presentation today.
Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President, and to Councilman Rue, I want to thank you for bringing this great group of folk to the council today. I just want to echo just a little bit of what Mr. Harris Dawson said, you know, to Blue Shield, "I can't thank you enough, not just for the contribution, but historically for your engagement with the community." And it's, you know, just with great pride that I look up and I see my dear friend Khalid Shaw, who has been in the trenches for so many years, always being there for nothing just to try to make things better and to help people move forward. So proud that we've got Alberto here, and I think Community Coalition has always been at the top, started with our Congresswoman Karen Bass, then taken over by our colleague Marquise Harris Dawson, and Alberto is keeping it at that same level. And thank you for the work that you're doing with us in the city to try to create the office of social equity, to try to bring people together, to let individuals in this city know that we have more in common than we do that separates us. And just to always be around Ariva Martin is a pleasure. I consider myself one of the early people that she had conversations about this vision to deal with individuals and families that suffer from autism, and I can remember over 14 years ago when this was just an idea that is now a reality. So I just wanted to rise to thank you for your service and to say, we've got to do more, that this is just the beginning, not the ending, and we just have to continue to build this army of hope, this tidal wave of hope that says, "Enough is enough. We're gonna come together as a city and lead the rest of this country." So I'm honored to just be here in your presence. Could you give them one more round of applause? Lord knows, they deserve it.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to join my colleagues in saluting these organizations that have stepped up to the plate, that are really impacting the quality of life for the citizens all throughout our city, especially in those areas of need, especially in those areas of challenge. And as I look at the recipients, you know, many of you have been around for a little while, you know, you're not... These aren't newcomers to this struggle, to this commitment. And again, I just want to join my colleagues in saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you" on behalf of the 4 million citizens in our city. I know in my district, as I mentioned earlier, nonprofits are the safety net. You know, they're the conscience. They're the shadow government sometimes in getting things done and in being advocates for the citizens that we represent together. So again, thank you, and thank you, Blue Shield, not to be confused with the other blue. But we appreciate your stepping up to the plate, the commitment from the top, from the top down. And so, we appreciate the community involvement, the community activism, the willingness to work with the community to make things happen, and this is an excellent way to celebrate the potential that we all have. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President, and on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we want to recognize the Blue Shield of California Promise Health Plan for their incredible leadership in raising awareness and, of course, providing $1.1 million to these community-based nonprofits. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
If I can, I do want to recognize we have a special visitor with us today, member of the Sentinel Valley School Board, Mr. Hugo Rojas. Could you give him a round of applause?
Madam Clerk, let's take up items forty-three through forty-seven. Mr. Kocorian would like to speak on those closed item sessions.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Items forty-three through forty-seven are all matters that have been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the routine settlements in forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-seven. And as to number forty-six, Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Are there any questions, members, on any of these items before we vote? See now, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Madam President, if I may. Item forty-three, in the case entitled Payman Yadigar et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $375,000 in settlement. Item number forty-four, in the case entitled William Mears et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $5,750,000 in settlement. Item forty-five, in the case entitled Michael Rodney Williams versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. In the case entitled 46, Paul Blumberg versus Brian Hewitt, Sam Martin, Brad Foss, City of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. And finally, item 47, in the case entitled Nora Bersian versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to 150,000 in settlement.
Well, Madam Clerk, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll on these items. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to items number two and three. There's been two members that have requested to recuse themselves on items two and three. You can do so at this time. Mr. Price and Mr. Lee, take them off the board. Members, let's vote on these two items, items two and three. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes. Madam Clerk, we're going on to multiple speaker cards. Mr. Mike Greenspan, are you here? Come on up. Looks like you filled cards for all items. Why don't you go ahead and speak on the items and then your one minute of general public comment.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, Orange Bowl champ, Florida Gator, UCLA, I still don't. Okay. Now, let's start with one of these vacations. I'm not talking about a vacation when we get a vacation from the City Council, but I'm talking about vacating property, usually probably at less per square foot than market value. What's that old movie titled, "Brother, Can You Spare a Dime"? Well, Brother, Can You Spare 15,000, or 32,000, or 47,000? That's what the fees are for these things, and you get some bargain on land, you know, contribute to the council members' race and you get a bargain. Why not? Now, I see that, as I go to the latter items, because there is something important about one of the latter items, and that is, in the 30s, 37, 38, there, I guess Joe Buscayino, our Rhino, Republican in name only, is a, you know, lamb chopper. He's, he's like a lamb to the pork choppers, the City Council majority of Democrats. But he's getting some money. That's why I'm calling him a lamb chopper. It's an old term from Florida. And, one, he's transferring to a bridge housing project in item 38, $1,500,000. Transfer, just like I keep talking about transferring UCLA football budget to homeless support services. And then we've got item 39, $3,600,000. Wow, that's, that's even more than we overpaid Chip Kelly. So, just letting you know, transfer is a good viable word for a concept to take money and spend it better. Now, the, thanks for the memories. That's what Bob Hope said. I'm going to item 36, our City Council meetings in Van Nuys. Instead of having to take the 224 to the red line, I take the 224 to the orange line. I was at, waiting for the meeting and I heard, "Bock, bock, 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 bock", and Mr. Herman was at the bus stop, and we rode the bus together. So, it was fun, that meeting. I got to put up, got to put up one of these, yes. Got to put up one of these for all of you. And, I got so mad at Fobble interrupting, as he always does, and I said, "Get fucked." And now, let me amend that. Suck dick, Fobble. After all, my rights matter. And I always remember my right to speak matters under all conditions.
Mr. Greenspan, get back on topic, please.
I'm on topic. After all, suck dick, Fobble.
Okay, you're off topic.
Well, take those seconds, baby killers. Now, let me go over something that's in Farrell's district, 166 South Alvarado, Hope on Alvarado. We remember hope. We were hoping there would be a January 20th finish date, but the Beverly Press just hyped it. Instead of doing anything else, they just hyped it. And it's still about 80% finished. Got to remember, they're quick to hold out their grubby paws for more money, but they're terrible at finishing stuff on time. I mean, what else can I say about that? We can hope it'll be finished by February 20th or March 20th. I'd say with a good windshield, look at it, it was about 80% completed, but it's not 100% completed. And remember, my rights matter, especially you wetback gill. It matters. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Greenspan, thank you very much. Members of the public, I understand people have a right to freedom of speech. I need you to please remain, Mr. Greenspan, I need you to take a seat and stop interrupting this meeting. Eric Previn? Eric Previn, followed by Antonia Ramirez and Wayne Spindler. Mr. Previn, you filled out cards for items 12 through 18 and 26 through 41. And your general public comment?
I'll do my best. In stark contrast to the last couple meetings where you had nothing open to speak, you have a million things that are open. So we'll try. First of all, Asset Works LLC, here we have an opportunity to jack up by 1.7 million to a total of 6.2 million for a group that looks at, you know, surplus asset management, but it's very, it's about getting revenue. It's just, it's too much money to be paying to these guys. I know they make it seem like, look, we're getting you such a great deal because we're taking care of it, but they're just, they're taking is what they're doing ultimately. And it increases in a false way, I believe. We have two in CD2 that I'm looking at on Magnolia and Colfax, a lighting district, and also on Riverside and Radford. You know, these are important, but the transparency is terrible. We never get anybody participating, people don't really know what's going on. What we do know is that we shouldn't be increasing Persolito rentals and DOT and Krikorian up to 40 miles an hour. They say they're against it, but they do it on Colfax and Witsit, and we have people get run over, including LASD. So we don't want that, okay? I do see that Bonin's got some golf course helping out with some LED ballards, which seems like a good way to go. Those are the things that light up and make it clear that you've got pedestrians around. That's important. Now, Madam President, obviously you're getting into the political debate about whether or not we should have any private detention centers of any kind, and you're making it impossible, so good work, I think. You know, I'm not sure about that kind of, are we going to get sued on that as well? You know, I'm against that kind of private detention, obviously. Englander Kenaby and Allen doing businesses, Dana Sales of whatever it's called, 360. There's so many 360s. Mr. Bernician is at one of the 360s. In any case, she's got a pretty nice-looking project that has about 89 long-term bicycle parking spaces. So that's pretty impressive. And then they have short-term bicycle spaces as well. There's also some motor vehicle, but it's noticeably less than what it used to be. Now, the one that you recused on, Mr. Lee, is ICM Architects. Now, this is one where on December 11th, we changed the financial policies upstairs in a quiet moment, so that this kind of, without the money really locked down, can be funded. Don't interrupt, please, sir. I appreciate your interest.
So we've already voted on that item, so.
Oh, you did vote on it?
Yes, move on to the ones that you've signed up for.
Okay, then let's talk about the $5.75 million settlement for the LAPD, and how it's in stark contrast to when a woman LAPD officer accused the department.
So we voted on the settlements also, Mr. Previn. So why don't you get on to one of the items that you're actually allowed to speak on?
Sure, sure. But can you give us the update on independent living yesterday?
No, Mr. Previn, move on to the items.
Mr. Previn, get back on the items you signed up for.
I'm trying, but you know, you make it very difficult, but you've got vacations of city property. Thank you for vacating all the city property. This is an excellent opportunity to bring up the monstrosity that's been vacated, the vacations, several thousand, but not, maybe a couple thousand, maybe 1,500 square feet, but it's going up against an enormous, amorphous, unexplained-to-our-neighbors project on Ventura Boulevard, just about 700 to 800 feet east of Witsit.
Give him his one minute of general public comment.
Now, the problem is, as we've said before, the problem is that the people don't know what it is, and Caro Torosian doesn't know what it is. Now, if you've got a guy upstairs in CD2, here comes a VAC to insult the public, if you have a guy upstairs in CD2 who doesn't know what's going on, by the way, congratulations to Anna who's back. She popped over to Janice Han's office for a little work-for-a-big boss, then come back to work for Ner Martinez, and it is nice to see her here. I do appreciate, she's a good egg, and we just hope that, you know, she's been relieved of the petition gathering duties. But then again, what happened with that? Because as I've been exploring the petitions, Madam Martinez, you only submitted just over 500, barely even, Mr. Krikorian only submitted 590, and yet, we were reading about all these people who couldn't get the valid signature. So it raises questions, raises questions about what's going on with the city clerk, who as we all know is, you know, there is a presumption of regularity that she does her job, but how many different times? And then it all gets blamed on a VAC and Sharon, so, and the fingers start pointing, but we really need to do fair and square, despite correct his effort to get the word.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, your time is up. Next speaker is Antonia Ramirez, are you here?
And Ms. Ramirez, before you start, let me just remind you, please don't shout into the microphone.
And Ms. Ramirez, you look, looks like you filled out cards for all items. I'm going to remind you that you need to stick to the items you signed up to speak on, and then you're going to get your one minute of general public comment. Do you understand that?
Don't we always? Okay. Um, let's see, starting with number eight and all the other lighting and maintenance agenda items. What we recommend is deport all the chungo Latino criminal, chungo wetbacks, and gangbangers before you start any repairs.
Just remember, hold on for just a second, let's, hold our time. I understand it's going to be very uncomfortable, you listen to the speaker, it's her right to speak. You will have your minute to speak as well. Please don't interrupt this meeting.
Again, before you start any repairs and any repairs or lightning or maintenance on any street on the city, I recommend you deport all these goddamn gangbangers, wetbacks, and niggers, and all the others who destroy property and who don't get arrested. They destroy property night and day. People report the crimes, but nobody ever does or follow up on it, including the city attorney, Michael fucking Fuhr, the matzo ball Jew asshole. And nobody does anything to protect the city. We, the taxpayers' ward, living on the streets, pay for these services. And what happens? We have to repair, repair, repair every single day. Thank you, fucking goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers. Having said that, let's go over to item number, um, let's see, item number 29, Mitchell Farrell. I recommend that we approve the 110,000 for city services only and only if you conduct your goddamn sodomy and all your Grammy Awards, your perverted bisexual tranny and faggot Grammy Awards at Skid Row. That's where they need to be held. And then stop the violence against women, trannies, wetbacks, and faggots, and bisexuals, cause the crimes against all these women and women.
So we seem to have gotten a little off topic, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you very much. In consequence fraud waste, that's a no. Hold on a second. Ms. Ramirez, you've got to stick to the items you signed up for.
Okay. And again, ladies and gentlemen, for those of us who do live on the streets, this is very important. We, we are sticklers about how the money is being spent. And number 31, it is $15,000. Why don't we use the 15,000 instead of using that for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the persons responsible for the criminal deaths? We should use it to get ICE. Pay ICE and bring them into the city. God bless ICE and the custom border patrol agents. God bless America. And again, ladies and gentlemen, we need to take proactive, again, current price talked about quality of life. What quality of life do we have, ladies and gentlemen, when we have to find dead bodies all over the streets of LA caused by the goddamn wetbacks, gangbangers, niggers, and all the white trash and all the junkies? We got to do something about it. God bless the LAPD, they can't do everything. You need to enforce the law, and city attorney needs to enforce it and prosecute the motherfuckers. Having said that, I'll go to my public comments. Thank you so very much.
Okay, give her her one minute of general public comment.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year, ladies and gentlemen. I wish we had public safety and the law enforced aggressively like we did under the most notably, the exceptional, the Bulldog Fighter, who also fought for his LAPD officers, and that was the late LAPD chief, Daryl Gates. God bless him, may he rest in peace. The man did his job. Today, we have no quality of life. I live in a Placita homeless, along with other Latinas, and we get harassed by these fucking Skid Row niggers who walk in and all around Main Street and Spring, and they walk towards La Placita, and they rob us, they attack us, they urinate on us, and they cut in line, and they bitch moan shit like they own the streets. They don't own nothing. And this is in light of Martin Luther King Day. He's probably shitting up, choking, and he's probably upchucking, having diarrhea, thinking he got himself killed so these niggers could come and attack other people. Keep in mind, there is no racism, discrimination, bigotry, and unequal protection and lack of due process for these fucking niggers. They think they are above the fucking law. Fuck the niggers, fuck the gangbangers and the wetbacks.
You're done, Ms. Ramirez. Next speaker, next speaker is Wayne Spindler. Mr. Spindler, we're pretty much speaking on all items, including general public comment. Go ahead.
So yes, welcome to the shit. Now we get to the reap. And again, thank you to Eduardo. He reached out. We got all the bribes and all the payoffs to the appropriate people. Now, all of the properties today will all come off of reap. So let's give Eduardo and Councilman Weezer a hand for getting around the FBI. That's a good job. That's, you know, we got to get.
Get back on the topics you signed up to.
I am, I'm just showing how you do business, that we're doing business. So now, we're vacationing shit, and of course, you know that John Lee, the non-graduated, lying, dog-eating nigger from CD12 had to recuse himself. Again, thank you, that was the work of the city attorney.
So would you get back on to the items, Mr. Spindler?
That's right. They, they sometimes have to recuse, yes, and everybody here.
So you're talking about item two and three, which are already done, Mr. Spindler. Get back on to the items you signed up for.
All of the vacations. Don't worry, Princess Fobble, I'll get to you in general. Now, as you see, you see what happens, how we try to talk about the debating issues of vacationing streets. Vacationing streets means you privatize our streets, and all you have to do is come in with a bag of cash, and you can buy any street you want, and these 15 scumbags, Jose Weezer accepted and sometimes Gil, but the rest of them are all for sale. All you have to do is come up with the cash. Now, as you see, most people here are too fucking stupid to come up with cash. We come with empty pockets and have to pay $9 to park and walk six blocks to say, "Fuck the reap program." That's right, we don't like it. And then, of course, other shit on the agenda. We have homeless projects that will never be built, people on tents that will never see these apartments, they're going to go for market rent. This is why John Lee has a million dollars to run for office. They're going to take all of this affordable housing and all of these redevelopment zones and all of these poverty zones, and they're going to sell it and package it to Wall Street for junk bonds, just like they did 10 years ago. And that's the reason why CD8 and CD9 have so many of them. And all the developers today gave Mr. Harris-Dawson a 24-karat gold tie to welcome him into the Jew Jew family, and they will all get his campaign donations, running unopposed, yes. Now we get to Strefford Fobble, the sellout of 2020. Mr. Fobble, the city attorney sold you out. He sold you out. They didn't waive your claims. Now you're going to be sued for that stupid TRO shit in May, remember that? Remember when Mr. Rossiter defended you and represented the city while it defended in my case? Remember that? You could have got it all done for 17.5, $17,500 to end the last four years of all of this shit, and the city balked. "Bock, bock, bock." They said, "No money, bock, only costs." Now, what did you buy for 17,500, you ask? You bought yourself DWP fraud claims. I found out that PricewaterhouseCoopers could not fix your fraud. I filed 16 claims in a key tab. Congratulations, bitches.
Okay, you're done. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Members, let's go ahead and vote on a couple of items. Let's open the roll on items eight through 19.
Oh, wait a minute, eight through 19.
Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, those items passed. Let's go ahead and move on and vote on items 21 through 29. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
There's been a request to receive and file item 31. Mr. Blumenthal, do you want to speak on this item, sir?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I introduced this motion. It's a reward motion, uh, right during the, right after the recess because we had a spate of bank robberies. Uh, but the good news is, I'm asking us to note and file this because our great LAPD caught the guy, uh, and so that case is solved. So, ask for note and file.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, there's a speaker on item 31 also. Let's go ahead and hold that. Let's move on to items 32 through 35. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to items 37 through 40. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to item 42. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and, um, move on to item 41. There's a number of speakers on this item. If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Alex Quall. Alice Quall, you here? Alma Ramirez? If I, if I call your name, I need you to come forward. Alma? Lydia Lindsay? And Hannah Howard? Hannah Howard, are you here? How about Lydia? Ms. Ramirez, I haven't called your name yet. No, ma'am, you've already spoken on all your items.
I'm sorry, I thought you said mine.
Mm-hmm. Lydia's not here. Hannah Howard's not here. Garrett Ruiz? Garrett? Come on up. Leon Hankley? He's not here? And Michelle Saracetes? Okay, good morning. You have one minute to speak on item 41.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. My name is Alice Quo. I'm the president of the Southern California Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. My day job is that I'm a professor of child health policy and pediatrics at UCLA. In March of 2017, the AAP published a policy statement expressing our dismay at the detention of children at our country's borders. Since then, the AAP has continued to raise concerns about the quality of care that children receive in these centers. Children have unique health needs. The brain development of all children can be negatively impacted by time spent in these detention facilities. The AAP supports Councilwoman Martinez's proposed motion to ban the construction or operation of private detention centers, especially those that are intended to house children. No one should profit from the detention of children. On behalf of the 1,000 pediatricians in Los Angeles, 5,000 in California, and 67,000 pediatricians in the country, I urge the city council to support this motion to protect the health and welfare of children. Thank you.
Ma'am, what is your name? What's your name?
Hello, my name is Alma Ramirez. I am one of the co-coordinators of a firm LA chapter, um, a transnational feminist organization made of women of color. But I'm here today also as a mother, as a mother of two children and the daughter of a mother who has suffered the pain and trauma of family separation. In 2015, I met a five-year-old. Her name is Miley. She was detained for four months. When I spoke to her, one of the things that she taught me was how to eat cup of noodles in five different ways. Imagine the pain and trauma that Miley went through as a child and all the other children that we know suffer in detention centers. These are not places to prepare them to be reunited with their families. These are places that create trauma, pain, and, as we know, children have died in places like this. We at a firm want to say that we will not stop, that we will not stop until our children are safely returned to their families, and we will not stop fighting until detention centers and establishments that.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, I need you to, mom, I, I need you to sit down. Thank you. Are you Garrett Ruiz?
Yes, Garrett Ruiz.
Hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Hannah Howard, is she here? Leon Hankley? Michelle's in line. How about Andrew Moss? Andrew Moss, are you here? Brenda Villanueva? Victor Fernandez? Go ahead, Garrett.
Thank you, President Martinez. Uh, thank you, council members. My name is Garrett Ruiz. Um, I'm with the Democratic Socialists of America Immigration Justice Committee and the Close the Camps Coalition. Um, and I'm a, a resident of Council District 13, uh, Council Member O'Farrell's district. Um, I want to support, uh, this motion. I want to urge all council members, especially mine, Mr. O'Farrell, who's not here right now, um, to vote for this. Uh, it's so important. I'm someone who was born in the city of Los Angeles, so I have the privilege of being a U.S. citizen. Um, but many, many people in my community have been in detention centers. I have, I have known many folks, adults, who have gone through this system. Um, and it is so horrifying, the, the detention center system that we have in this country. The idea that we are putting kids in cages and that this corporation wants to come into the city of Los Angeles and do this is utterly horrifying. So, thank you so much, um, council members who are supporting this. Please do vote for this temporary measure and make it permanent as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good afternoon. Michelle Saracetes, Chicana Hopi Esletado, sir. I, um, have known many of you for about 20 years. Uh, we've fought against injustice and racism in all its form, and particularly poverty capitalism. I live about a mile from this site, and I look back at great pride of who we are and where we've, what we've been able to accomplish as Angelinos together. And, uh, we have built a city that is more reflective of the values we share. Um, and I know that you know the history of this company and the facts of this company, the history of incarceration and what it does to Black, Brown, and Native bodies and minds and spirits. And as well, that we know it's morally and ethically reprehensible beyond disgusting that this company wants to profit off of our youth and our people. I am asking you to, um, make sure that this does not go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brenda.
Good morning, honorable counsel. My name is Brenda Villanueva. I am currently the program director at Pueblo y Salud. Today, we are here to join Council President Ner Martinez and to thank her for the leadership in introducing this motion today to ban facilities like the proposed detention center in Arlita. These facilities have no place in the city of Los Angeles or California. We must do better because the children deserve safe environments while they are here. Vision Quest is trying to operate in the valley, and that's a direct slap in the face to our community. We need to send a message that the city of L.A. is taking a stand for their communities in protecting these children. As the daughter of immigrants and somebody that's thriving in the public health center, sector, I ask that council, the council support Madam President's motion to ban these facilities from operating in the city of L.A. and that we take a stand for the communities we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on for just a second. Are you Victor?
Yes.
Let me call a couple of more speakers. Leon Hankley is not here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Andrew Moss? It's not here. Tomas Torises?
Yes.
Come on up. Mariana Magaña? Heather Booth? Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah, I want to thank you for this temporary measure that you're putting against the concentration camps, which is really what it is. It's reminiscent of the Indian boarding schools. It's reminiscent of the darkest, uh, history of the United States in being able to, I mean, this is what like Argentina did during like, during the, um, during the height of their military dictatorship. And it, it's disgusting to actually see something like this happen. But I think the reality is it's temporary, and something permanent has to happen. And not only something permanent, like, we just changed, you know, the, the planning code, but if they come back with a CUP or variants, you know, I'm going to have to come here with, you know, a thousand other supporters and still talk against this, and I don't want to do this. I want this to be an actual permanent thing. I need to, we need L.A. to be more proactive for immigrants. We're an immigrant city, and, and like, like everybody says, we're all children of immigrants, and we have to fund a justice fund and be doing way more than just this. But this is a good start.
Good morning, city council members. Uh, I am Dr. Tomas Torises. I'm the executive director for the American Academy of Pediatrics in Southern California. I represent over 1,000 pediatricians in Los Angeles and 5,000 in California, and I'm here in the best interest of our youth. We have done extensive work with the Office of Rigo Reyes of the Los Angeles County Office of Immigrant Affairs, funding interns to assist in the development of a database to better follow up and reunite minors with family members. We offer the expertise of our immigrant health committee with any consideration of future and matters that pertain to undocumented minors. We are extremely concerned with the quality of care that minors receive while in detention and strongly believe that they do not belong in such facilities. I would like to leave with you a copy of the 2017 AAP policy, uh, for detention of immigrant children. We support your motion to end all construction and operation of detention centers, especially those intended for minors. We applaud you and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Can I leave this with one of you?
Sergeants, you, can you take the paperwork and, here, the sergeants, just go ahead and give it to one of the sergeants. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, council members and council president. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mariana Magaña, and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, also known as CHIRLA. Um, as it stands, the city of Los Angeles is home to the largest immigrant population, but also undocumented immigrant population. And so it is highly alarming to learn that Vision Quest, a for-profit company with a history of abuse in other states such as Philadelphia, uh, has contracted with ORR to open this facility. Um, we are here to thank the council president, to voice our support for this interim ordinance, but most importantly, to also flag that as this permanent ordinance is being constructed, to make sure there are no loopholes that the federal government can go through, just like they have done with state legislation as we have seen in the recent years. Um, we look forward to continuing our work with the city of Los Angeles to make sure this goes through, and also our work with our other partners such as Representative Garenas to make sure this, this does not happen. Thank you.
Thank you. What is your name?
Good morning. My name is Heather Booth.
Hold on for just a second, Heather. I'm going to call a couple of more speakers. Gloria Saucedo? Cassandra Mahrez? Kimberly Tejas? Go ahead, Heather.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Heather Booth with DSALA Immigration Justice Committee. I strongly support this motion, and thank you, Council President Martinez, for introducing it. Uh, but I also feel that it's really inadequate for the city to continue to play whack-a-mole with projects like this detention center. Your constituents have been continuously under attack by hostile federal government for years now. The council must be more proactive about making Los Angeles a real sanctuary city. You need to fund the justice fund. I'm an ultrasound tech. I work in a hospital, but I spend more time in meetings with other volunteers, like all these folks, working for immigration justice each week than the council's immigrant affairs committee spent in session all of last year, which was a total of 4.2 hours. You've got to do better, please. Immigration justice should be the business of this council. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Mi nombre es Gloria Saucedo. Vengo del Valle de San Fernando de la Coalición Justicia para los Niños.
Un momentito, déjame buscar el traductor. Okay. Got our translator to come on up? Can you start a clock again?
Mi nombre es Gloria Saucedo. Vengo del Valle de San Fernando.
My name is Gloria Saucedo. I come from the San Fernando Valley.
Soy de la Coalición Justicia para los Niños.
I am from Justicia de los Niños.
Los niños son inocentes.
The children are innocent.
Los niños son inocentes.
The children are innocent.
Ellos vienen buscando el cariño de sus padres que los abandonaron.
They come here looking for the love of their parents that abandoned them.
Buscando una vida futura para ellos.
Looking for a future, better life for themselves.
No podemos meterlos en un centro de detención.
We cannot put them into a detention center.
Venimos a apoyar a una gran mujer.
We come to support a great woman.
Del Valle de San Fernando.
From the San Fernando Valley.
Nuri.
For her excitement.
De parar esta centro de detención.
To stop these detention centers.
We need to remember, to be kind with the children is to be good for the, the city. Be kind with the children is good for the country. The children are innocent. They don't need, uh, detention centers. They need love, protection, and good communication education. Thank you.
Cassandra, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good morning. My name is Cassandra Meras, and I'm here from Pueblo y Salud, a nonprofit organization from the San Fernando Valley, where we strive to tear down the economic, social, and educational barriers by the Latino community that are faced by the Latino community. Therefore, today, we are here to join Madam President Martinez in supporting the motion to ban facilities like the one proposed in Arlita. These facilities have no place in the city of Los Angeles or in the state of California, or anywhere, to be exact. When history looks upon us today, we want the city of L.A. to be remembered for protecting our children, not locking them up in cages. Thank you.
Kimberly, give me just a second until I, I need to call a couple of more speakers. Oria? Anybody here with that name? Meg Watchner? Silberio Pelayo? Come on up. Matt Fisher? And Rob Kwon? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Tejas. I'm a board member with the National Lawyers Guild and will be speaking on their behalf today. The Guild fully endorses Council President Martinez's motion to draft an ICO banning the permitting of detention centers within the city limits. Furthermore, we encourage the council making that ban permanent as quickly as possible. Guild members are actively engaged in the fight to hold for-profit detention centers responsible for their human rights violations. Our legal observers are in the field documenting interference of community members protesting these facilities. Our lawyers are in the courtroom, bringing lawsuits against these, those profiting from these types of facilities. In less than two weeks' time, Guild lawyers will be in federal court representing eight individuals suing Geo Group and Adelanto Detention Center for their human rights violations, violations identical to the types Vision Quest has a long documented track record of engaging in.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Meg Walker. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of Los Angeles and a member of the Immigrant Justice Committee. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of those that cannot. Uh, we support this motion, which would be wholly uncontroversial and should pass unanimously. AB 32 is California law, making private detention centers illegal. This council unanimously passed language making L.A. a sanctuary city, but we need to do more than symbolic moves from the council. We need sustained action. After you pass this motion to the direct Department of City Planning to develop a temporary ICO prohibiting private detention centers, we expect you to move quickly to adopt permanent regulations to ensure that immigrant community members never again face detention in Los Angeles because of their status, no matter who is president. I'm speaking on, as the descendant of those that died in concentration camps in the Holocaust. This is happening on our watch. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Silberio Pelayo. I'm a resident of Silmar. I'm also a member of the Justice for Children Coalition. I'm here today with my daughter to support this motion. I also want to say that the city should consider, uh, not only not allowing for this concentration camp, this child prison, to be built, but to consider how these children may be supported because I suspect that they won't be the last, that folks will still continue to come. And it's not enough to simply face hate and to stop hate, but to transform. And it's not enough to simply face hate and to stop hate, but to transform that potential into something good. And to consider also the underlying conditions and systems which make this a reality. Because I suspect we'll be having more of these conversations as time goes on. Thank you.
My name is Matt Fisher. I'm a member of the Venice Neighborhood Council, but I'm representing myself today. I'd like to support this motion. As somebody who ran away from abusive foster care at 13, I was a victim of these detention centers myself for being homeless. We need to involve homeless people in this. We have Trump and Ridley Thomas right now talking about building detention centers for homeless people. They need to be included. If you want to talk about discrimination, you're still doing it. Thank you.
Rob, hold on. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Javier? Javier? Kay Oda? Anybody here? Kay? How about Nancy? Nancy Oda, are you here? Come on up. Christopher? Come on up. And Jordan? Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. I'm here today in support of this motion. The one thing I would like to see is a long-term solution. I don't think we face a temporary problem here. This was wrong when Obama did it. It was inhumane when Obama did it, and there's no way of changing that, no matter who's in office. I think it's also important to recognize the reality of the limitations of this motion. It absolves us of complicity in a corrupted system, and that's really, really, really important. But it doesn't actually help anybody that's impacted by this immigration system. It doesn't help anybody in deportation. It doesn't help anybody that's got the looming threat of deportation hanging over them. We have a question mark surrounding the L.A. Justice Fund and this council's commitment to it in the long term. A few weeks ago, 85 organizations sent your offices a letter from a coalition explaining the current status of the Justice Fund and demands. I hope you read it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Francisco. Past resident from Los Angeles, moved to Arlita. Could you please explain why the individual Peter Shea is responsible for the loss of vital housing for vulnerable children at Safe Haven in 2009 and behind the abuses of immigration children documented in the L.A. Times that Casa Libre in 2019 is being allowed to participate in a discussion about the well-being of our unaccompanied children? Also, what has the sanctuary city of Los Angeles done since the L.A. Times article to ensure the well-being of the children at Casa Libre and compliance by Peter Shea? On top of that, is Peter Shea under investigation by the Attorney General Becerra's office? How much taxpayer money has gone to Peter Shea plus the Center of Human Rights in the past two years? From the council members, has this funding, from what council members has this funding come from as well? Thank you.
So, hold on for just a second. You're saying your name was Francisco, but I called Javier. Is that you as well?
Javier. Francisco Javier.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Christopher Gino. Mr. Corian, I just wanted to say it's nice to see your face in person for the first time. I live in your district. I should need no argument to ban these camps because there is no good argument to put them in in the first place. Perhaps the moral argument is a simplistic one, but to me, it is very profound. We must, we must ban these camps. We must. There is no other alternative. We can convince ourselves with words like detention center, with shelter, if we have some sort of perverse sense of humor, to use the word shelter, we can convince ourselves that this time will be different, that this time surely things will change. But it will not. It will not change unless we ban these camps. Thank you. We must.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Kyoko Oda. I was born in Northern California in Tulley Lake Concentration Camp, a sight of shame. I come today to speak for those children who have no voice. This is very personal because I know that these young travelers are hurting. In fact, it makes me very angry. It pains me to think that this detention station could possibly be in my Arlita neighborhood. Sixty years ago, the San Fernando Valley Japanese-American Community Center was built by struggling Ise and Nise families who were incarcerated during World War II. They wanted a safe place for their children. Will this Arlita Detention Center be a safe place? It is intolerable to me today to allow a detention station that is a six-minute walk from that center. The boys are exhausted and need a respite from life's cruelty. Thank you to all the councilmen and women for your support.
My name is Kay Oda. I'm the president of the San Fernando Valley Japanese-American Community Center. Children, including immigrant children, are the future of the world. We need to get these children back with their families. That is where they belong. We also have to create an environment for them, safe and nurturing, that they can also contribute to the world. And I would like to thank Council President Nury Martinez for all your efforts in that effort. Thank you.
Jordan? Hold on. Give me just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Victoria? Is anybody here by the name of Victoria? You want to come on up? Tanya Kane Perry? Lydia Ponse? Lydia, I thought I saw you in the back. Lydia? You want to come on up? Jennifer? And Federico Bustamante? Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Palmer. I'm a law student at UCLA. And I'm here to speak on my individual behalf as well as on the behalf of a coalition of student organizations there, including the National Lawyers Guild, the Survivors and Allies Support Network, Outlaw, and more, as well as on behalf of the DSA LA Prison Abolition Committee. We students and activists in Los Angeles want Los Angeles to be a sanctuary city, a real sanctuary city. We support this temporary measure and we hope that it leads to a permanent measure. We don't care what these detention centers call themselves, what name they go by, what semantic loopholes they jump through to try to argue that they're not a real detention center. We don't want any kind of detention centers in this city. Children do not belong in cages of any kind. We do not want them there. Please vote yes on this proposal and please continue to fight for children and to fight for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Victoria. I'm a grassroots community organizer from the San Fernando Valley. And I would like to follow up on what Francisco Javier asked about Peter Shea. What was the quid pro quo between Herb Weston?
Victoria, Victoria, hold on for just a second. We're discussing item 41. We're not discussing.
It's part of it. It has a lot to do with it.
No, it doesn't.
No, no, no. Everyone else, be quiet.
Hold on for just a second. I'm not, I don't need the public to disrupt. We're talking about item 41. We need to keep to that item and talk. If you wish to speak about the other thing, you can do it during general public comment. I'm not suggesting you can't. You just can't do it during this item.
In what Peter Shea is doing. And you are not protecting the immigrant community that you claim to be protecting.
You can speak about any of this during general public comment. Thank you. Do you want to come forward? Sorry about that. What's your name?
Hi, my name is Tanya Kane Perry. I'm a resident of Representative Huesar's district and an 18-year full-time faculty at Cal State L.A. I'm also a volunteer with Al Otro Lado, working with the desperate refugees in Tijuana. I want to support this motion. And I beg this council to recognize that what we're really looking at is human trafficking. These are private organizations, private companies, profiting on the trafficking of children. And it harks back to our long and ugly history of trafficking brown, black, indigenous bodies. We will not let this happen. Thank you.
Good morning. Are you Jennifer?
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I just want to thank the council and the councilwoman for taking the time to listen to me. I'm coming to you as a young, concerned Latina citizen of the San Fernando Valley. I'm in support of this motion and I do hope that this becomes a permanent motion. We do need to stop these corrupted centers. And how a migrant prison for underage kids is even being considered in Arlita is beyond me. Now, I do speak to you specifically, councilwoman. Many people before you have been promised to keep corruption out of the city, the same people who have aided corruption that is happening right now at this moment. Shelters like Casa Libre, who currently shelter migrant children, are being cited continually right now in 2020 still. So this city can't even get it together to stop corruption less than a mile away from here. It's two metro stops away from City Hall. With the people who are on the same committee that you are supporting, we need to go further than just stopping these private migrant centers, but also stop any of this funny business with your quote "friends." My question is, how are you going to make sure that these for-profit migrant centers are blocked and then keep them from being handed off to the same people who are currently not being held accountable at this moment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lydia?
Lydia Ponse with Affirm L.A. Why does Vision Quest think they can build in California, let alone the City of Angels? Why is that? Because we're supporting hate speech, like earlier, and because we look the other way and we forget how we got here with all the policies and ordinances and trade and funding civil wars in all these other countries, how we forgot to say please and thank you and I'm sorry. Today's vote is important. I do not want to see one abstention or of no vote. This should be unanimous because the world is watching. And it's not like Politrix of the last 50, 70 years. Because the power of the people cannot be stopped. So if they build it, we shut it down. If they build it, we shut it down. If they build it, we shut it down.
Hold on for just a second. Are you Federico Bustamante?
I am.
Give me just a second. Let me call more speakers. Sierra Marsellas, are you here? Sierra, I want to come on up. Myra Todd? Arnold Sacks? Arnold Sacks, are you here? Paul Soak? Go ahead.
Thank you. Our elected officials should be public servants. When they instead become self-serving politicians, we end up with situations like Citizens United and corporate prisons like the ones being proposed in Arlita that drown out our voices with their lobbying dollars. As the United States presidency heads into an impeachment trial for only the third time in history, we are reminded of the sacred oath that those entrusted with public office take. A couple of weeks ago, City Council President Nury Martinez took such an oath to become the first female Latina City Council President. And as the gravity of the Trump regime's corruption and betrayal is finally being reckoned with, we would be remiss to ignore that Los Angeles is not immune from such malfeasance and that it does not happen overnight, but that it takes the coordinated effort and complicit silence of many over the years to metastasize in this way. Although we haven't had much luck with presidents lately, we are hopeful that Nury Martinez will be the champion and true public servant that our community so desperately need, especially after the apparent quid pro quo between Herb Weston and Peter Shea that has seen the squandering of hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you very much, sir. Time is up.
End of disservice of children at Casa Libre.
Are you Sierra?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sierra Marsellas. I'm a second-year law student at UCLA School of Law. I'm here to represent myself as a resident of Brantwood. I'm also here to represent hundreds of progressive students at UCLA School of Law as a co-chair of the National Lawyers Guild at the UCLA chapter. I'm here to thank the City Council President Martinez for proposing the temporary measure and to urge you to accept this temporary measure, but also to urge you to adopt a permanent measure. Incarcerating children creates trauma that can last a lifetime, and the city should not be permitting private companies to profit off of the traumatization of our youth. I was privileged enough to be born in this country and was never threatened with incarceration as youth, but our city should be doing more to protect those who are not born with that privilege. Thank you.
What is, what is your name?
Myra Todd. I'm going to speak Spanish.
You want to speak Spanish? We need to translate for you then. Can we get the translator? Okay, go ahead.
Buenos dias, señora Nury Martinez.
Good morning, Ms. Nury Martinez.
Consejales presentes.
Council members present.
Esta mañana estoy aquí en representación de Justicia para los Niños.
This morning, I'm here in representation of justice for the kids.
Yo vivo en el área de Van Nuys.
I live in the area of Van Nuys.
Y también soy la abuela.
And I'm also the grandmother.
De dos niñas.
Two girls.
Que estuvieron en un centro de detención.
That were in a detention center.
Y también estoy aquí.
And I'm also here.
Pidiéndoles el apoyo.
Asking for the support.
Especialmente a la señora Nury Martinez.
Especially Ms. Nury Martinez.
Que la escuché decir.
That I heard her say.
Que se oponía a esos centros de detención.
She was opposed to these detention centers.
Esos centros de detenciones.
These detention centers.
Marcan a los niños para toda una vida.
Scar their kids for an entire lifetime.
Yo puedo verlo en mis dos nietas.
I can see it in my two grandchildren, granddaughters.
Siempre están hablando de la hielera.
They're always speaking of the freezer.
De la perrera.
The doggedness.
Y de esas personas.
And of those people.
Que no tienen sentimientos.
Who don't have feelings.
Ni corazón.
Or heart.
Para meter en unos jaulas.
To cage up children.
Que de igual como mi hijo y mis nietos.
Just like my son and my grandkids.
Llegaron aquí.
Came here.
Sin hacerle daño a nadie.
Without harming anyone.
Porque vienen huyendo.
Because they come here escaping.
De una pobreza.
From poverty.
De cómo son acusados.
Of how they are accused.
En nuestros países.
In our countries.
Y pedimos el apoyo de ustedes, señora.
We ask for your support.
Señora Nury Martinez.
Ms. Nury Martinez.
Y a todos los concejales.
And all the council members.
Y a los que nos odian.
Thank you.
And to those who hate us, we're going to keep battling against the hate.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Paul Soak with the Youth Justice Coalition. Capitalism, profits, and care cannot coexist. They're mutually exclusive. And I say this as somebody that was orphaned at 16, got tried as an adult, sent to the state prison system, and then taken by ICE on the day that I was supposed to come home. I've been through the whole entire system from one end to the other. You say detention like it's just a place to send somebody, a young person. Every detention center I went to was the same as a prison, as a jail, as any other lockup in the United States that I've been to. And as much time as I spent in California system, about 16 years worth, from 17 to my mid-30s, spent about a year and change in ICE. Those are some of the worst conditions I've seen. Some of the worst stress that I had was there. Prison didn't have any comparison. I'd rather go back to prison than that place again. And not only have I been in lockups in California for ICE, I've been in lockups in Louisiana, Washington, Arizona. That's what they do. I've even had a special flight for myself, one person on a DC 10, just me. Capitalism, care, and profits cannot coexist.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, hold on for just a second. I'm going to call a couple of more speakers. Mark Masoka, are you here? Kathy Masoka? Is Kathy here? Come on up. Nancy Tagayama? Guadalupe Gonzalez? Is Guadalupe Gonzalez here? Juny Bino? And Billy Dickey? Sounds like Mr. Spindler again. Mr. Arnold Sacks, go ahead. You have your one minute.
Yes, thank you. City planning, city planning is going to do something. Let's see, we have Holocaust, we have genocide, we have internment camps, we have detention centers, we have jails, we have bridge housing, we have underpass housing, we have tent cities, we have sanctuary cities, we have sex trafficking, we have crisis housing. Seems to me not only is immigration system broken, but the government system is broken. And Congress debates impeachment. We don't have anybody talking about immigration. It used to have no term limits, so you used to be able to get whatever you wanted done forever. Now you just have to last three years, three terms, and you're golden. LAUSD, DCFS, children, same thing. When you bring people in, when is the city going to obligate itself to create a sanctuary for sanctuary cities? Not going to do it. What about the marijuana revenue that the city is taking in? Where is it going? Huh?
Next speaker, Mr. Sacks, you're done. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. I'm Mark Masoaka. I'm here with Nikke Progressive, it's a Japanese-American community organization. We support this motion. We sent our members to protest the ICE-proposed use of Fort Sill, Oklahoma, as a detention center for children. There, we helped persuade the governor to block that use. Fort Sill in World War II was a concentration camp for Japanese-Americans, and we want to oppose and fight any similar use against any similar inhuman and unlawful treatment of children. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Masoaka, and I'm with Nikke for Civil Rights and Redress, a 40-year organization that fought for redress and reparations for Japanese-Americans. Japanese-Americans understand injustice of concentration camps, of separating families, of incarcerating children, even children who were orphans were brought to Manzanar into Children's Village because they were considered dangerous. So we understand the injustice of incarcerating children and families. We also understand the importance of fighting and standing up for justice. We fought for justice, we fought for an apology and reparations over a 10-year campaign, and we won. We built solidarity and understanding with the communities and with people across the country. So we know it's important to stand up. We stand up for Muslims and build solidarity with immigrants today, and we will continue. I say this because I want to express the determination and the legacy of Japanese-Americans to stand up for others and to continue to fight for justice. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Tagayama, and my parents were incarcerated at the Manzanar concentration camp. My mother's father was taken in 1942 and sent to the Tunica Canyon Detention Station here in Los Angeles, and then he was lost in the system. I'm representing today the San Fernando Valley Japanese-American Citizens League as the president. I'm governor of the JCL Pacific Southwest District, and I sit on the JCL National Board. We oppose any detention centers because we, as Japanese-Americans, understand and lived this nightmare, and we have the experience to say, this is not a good thing. I grew up in Pacoima all my life, and the Tunica Canyon Detention Center is also in District 7. We oppose any detention centers here because it separates the family. My mother was separated. So, thank you.
Are you Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hold on for just a second. June Hibino, are you here? June? She's not in the room. Okay, she will be the last speaker, and I'm going to close public comment on item 41. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Guadalupe Gonzalez, and I am a resident of San Pacoima in Council District 7. I am here to speak in support of item 200065. This proposal to build an immigrant detention center in the middle of one of Los Angeles' most culturally diverse and immigrant-rich neighborhoods is not only an insult to all of Los Angeles residents, but a direct attack on our community. I call upon the City Council to pass this motion and take proactive action so that proposals like this one, to build a child concentration camp in the city of Arlita, cannot even be imagined. Thank you.
Hello, my name is June Hibino, and I'm speaking for Nikke Progressive, it's a group that's based in Little Tokyo. I speak also as someone whose parents and grandparents were sent to concentration camps during World War II. So Japanese-Americans know full well what it's like to be rounded up and have our families separated and shipped off to detention centers. In '42, Japanese-Americans did nothing wrong. Just like today, the migrants and asylum seekers have done nothing wrong. They're just searching for safety and lives free from poverty and violence. So we are vehemently opposed to the detention of migrant families and asylum seekers and the separation of families, and especially the detention of children. We fully support the ordinance and also a permanent ban on the construction and operation of privately-owned detention centers in the city of LA. Thank you.
Thank you so very, thank you so very much, and that was the end of public comment, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Nuri Martinez.
Mr. President, colleagues, I want to first of all thank all the members of the public who signed up to speak today to let us know that you're adamantly opposed to immigrant prisons being built or opened in the city of Los Angeles. This vote today will squarely, squarely put in place our opposition to any construction or opening of any type of detention center in the city of Los Angeles for any undocumented children or any minors, for that matter. I am a daughter of immigrants, and it is appalling to me to think that this company that is profiting from the misery and the pain of children would open up in a very predominantly Latino community such as Arlita. Things like detention centers or holding centers, or whatever you want to call them, I call them prisons because that's what they are, have absolutely no place in communities like Arlita or any other neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles. Today, members, what we're doing is ensuring that this ICO goes into place to put a pause on any type of facility that wants to open in any community in the city of Los Angeles while we work through Mr. Weston's motion that actually calls for a permanent ban of any type of detention center in the city of Los Angeles. It's making its way through the city attorney's office, and I hope Mr. Weston will bring this ordinance to us in the next couple of weeks. But having said that, for now, we need to ensure that this company knows firsthand that we are not going to support any type of detention center being built at this facility. We know as of today that the Trump administration and the federal government separated 5,500 children. We know that for a fact, and we also know that they lied about the amount of kids that they were detaining. We also know that the federal government had no way of actually tracking or reuniting these children with their families. We now know that. So this administration has let us know every single time that not only are they holding our children back, but they've lied in terms of how they figure they're going to solve this issue. So there's no way in Los Angeles where any of these detention centers have a place, and I just want to ensure that we have every single mechanism in place so that this detention center or this jail does not have a place in Arlita or any part of the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank Mr. Price and Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Weston for seconding this motion, and also I want to commend Mr. Weston for introducing the original, original motion that would actually permanently ban any type of these facilities in the city of Los Angeles. It's making its way, sir, but I think you all should be applauded for introducing and having the foresight to ensure that we actually take a permanent position on banning any type of these facilities. So, members, I ask for your "I" vote. We cannot allow for vision quests or any type of these corporations to profit from our children, from our neighborhoods, and from our community. We need to stand in solidarity, and we need to also send a message to the second facility that they want to build in the community of Riverside. They have plans to open two facilities in the state of California. They have $25 million to do so. They've chosen Arlita as one of their facilities. The second facility that they've chosen is in Hemet Riverside. We need to ensure that people in those communities know that they have a right to oppose these types of facilities, and we need to band with them in the community of Riverside to ensure that they know they have rights, and their municipality should be doing something to ensure that these prisons don't open up in their neighborhoods. So I ask for your "I" vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you for your leadership. We have, we get quiet in the audience, please. We have two other speakers on the queue. Councilman Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, I'm the son of a Holocaust survivor and lost family members in the Holocaust, and I grew up wondering, how could the world not accept people whose lives were threatened? And we've, we've seen it firsthand here in this country. We've seen children separated, we've seen children dying in these kinds of camps, so I appreciate your motion. My only question is, how can we be assured that this will be done in a timely manner? Because we pass things, they need to be turned into an ordinance by the city attorney. We might wait weeks, we might wait months. Do you have an agreement with the city attorney's office that they are going to turn this around expeditiously? And is there a way, before we receive this ordinance back, that our staff can at least be aware that this is in place so that nothing happens between the time we pass this and the time we get it back in ordinance form?
Yes, I'm going to close it with the city attorney's office to ensure that this goes into effect immediately and also to ensure that the original motion that permanently bans these types of facilities from opening and operating in the city of Los Angeles gets expedited, and we're able to vote on that ordinance here in council.
So hopefully, this is the city attorney's top priority until it's written, because I, I know we have seen an occasional thing, usually relating to the land use that's not as pressing as this, but where we pass an item, but it doesn't get done in time to actually provide the protections we need. So I want to add my voice to those asking the city attorney's office to move this as expeditiously as physically possible.
Point one taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Weston?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for bringing this very important issue before this council today. Other than the indigenous people of this country, we are all immigrants here. We, some of us by choice, unfortunately for me, just by chance, but we came here for one reason and one reason only: to live a better life than our parents so that our children and grandchildren could live a better life than us. I am a descendant of slaves, and I still know of the horror to go to work in the fields and come home and have somebody rip your children away from you, in some cases you may never, ever, ever, ever see again. I can't imagine how the children deal with that. I cannot imagine how their parents deal with that. Any adult that would believe that this is the appropriate way to deal with immigration issues has a serious problem. I have never stood up on this floor and bad-mouthed anyone, nor have I bad-mouthed individuals that work for our city family. And I'm not going to do that today, but what I am going to do is send a message to the staff here at the city of LA, planning in particular, why are we here? We introduced a motion. We voted on a motion July 3 of 2019 to address this issue. We should not be here today. So what I'm calling on is for the city staff. This is urgent. You have to have a sense of urgency when you're talking about tearing children away from their families. When you hear the stories of being put in internment camps, this, this is not something that you put on the back page. This is not something that you put on the back burner. This is something that has to happen today. That's why I introduced it. Now, I didn't do it with fanfare. Maybe I should have. But this is an urgent situation that can destroy a life and cause trauma for an entire family, and in some cases, an entire people. So we have an obligation to take care of people that do not have the resources to take care of themselves. So I gladly stand in support of this Ms. Martinez's motion, and I apologize for not making sure that our motion that we did in July, which you worked with me on, is not already in place. And I'm glad Mr. Corretts got up and talked about a sense of urgency, because this is an emergency. It is urgent, and people's lives depend on it. So with that said, I gladly support this, and will put on alert right now the city departments responsible for putting this together, that I will watch you like a hawk. We want this done. We want this done quickly. We want this temporary motion, but more importantly, we want our permanent motion, because it's our responsibility as being Los Angeles, the beacon of hope, the beacon of light, to send a message throughout this nation. No more. We are the United States of America, not the divided states of America. I ask for an "I" vote.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Ms. Martinez to close. That concludes our speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Thank you. Item passes unanimously, and thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, for your leadership on this matter. Madam Clerk, there's been a request for item 41 to be sent urgent forthwith.
Mr. President, that requires a vote. Would council like to vote on 41 urgent forthwith now?
Yes, please. So if you could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'd also like to send item 33 forthwith, please.
Without objection. And we're going to go to multiple, multiple item-
Multiple speaker cards?
Multiple speaker cards. And the first person is Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks, you signed up to speak for item number 30, 31, 36. So you got two minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Yeah, I'm not even sure what the items are on the agenda. They all, numbers just run together and what they concern, because I was so enthusiastically listening to your commentary on the immigration item.
So would you like to just go to general public comment, then, Mr. Sacks?
No, no, no. I've got my two minutes, and I will do my-
Actually, but you have to stay on the items, and you haven't signed up for general public comment, so if you could stick to 30, 31, and 36, please, Arnold.
So they were, they're motions by the city council, something along those lines, and motions to do something.
Yeah, no, no, no. You're not speaking to the item, so I think you should just-
Mr. City Attorney, I appreciate your input.
No, Mr. Sacks, you're wasting your time.
When you tell me what hate speech is and free speech-
So I think we should just cut your time now and ask you to sit back down.
Oh, you have the authority to do that?
Mr. President.
Is that part of your city charter?
Mr. Sacks, please stick to the item. You've got less than a minute left.
I am public comment or what?
No, no, please stick to the items that you signed up for. 30, 31, and 36.
Well, I'm saying, I don't have an agenda. I have a port of public works, and the agenda, well, the agenda, again, is like I said...
Mr. President, Mr. Sacks clearly doesn't want to speak to the items, so I think we should have him sit down.
I said again, you're gassed, but I don't need to hear...
Mr. Sacks.
Mr. City Attorney, please. Talk to your boss. So again, I understood. Mr. Wesson stood for the last discussion for Ms. Martinez, but when she had every item outside...
Mr. Sacks, 30, 31, 36.
And 37, and 38, and 39. And again, it's the city...
No, those were voted on. You got your cards into like 30, 31, 36.
What, 32, 33, and 34?
Thank you. That expires your time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number 30. Mr. Price?
So from item number 30, thank you.
Thank you. Let's take Mr. Price off the board. If we, Madam Clerk, if we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to item number 31. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, for the record, item 31 was received and filed, so... As Councilmember Blumenfield earlier stated that the, there was an arrest, so it should be received and filed, sir. That's for the record. It's done.
So do we need to... Okay. Let the record reflect 31 is received and filed, and we're moving to item number... So, public comment. We're now moving on to public comment, and if I could have Rob Quan.
Mr. City Attorney, 36.
So Rob Quan, one minute, general public comment.
I'd like to ask for a proclamation for myself and everybody else in this country that pays massive deductibles and co-pays to Blue Shield. Their generous contribution was taxpayer subsidy...
So this doesn't seem to be item 36.
No, he told me this was general public comment.
My apologies. I'm sorry, Mr. Quan.
So I do think it's important to remember that our for-profit, extractive insurance industry is the foundation for that, paid for by Angelenos. I also do wonder why the city attorney becomes so fervent in enforcing the rules when we're speaking, but Ms. Ramirez is allowed to ramble on endlessly without interruption. There was one occasion during her comment where she was interrupted. I do also think with Citizens United, 10-year anniversary, it's worth thanking Councilmember Kocorian. He was the only person on this body that voted against lifting our contribution limits for PACs.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. If I could also have Matt Fisher, Jacqueline Richardson, Michael Day, and then Ethan or Ethy, Ethne? Come on up. Matt Fisher, Jacqueline Richardson, Michael Day, Ethne, and Yolanda Alanese. If you could state your name.
Jacqueline Richardson. One item of worry for this coming election is that we're going to have those voting machines at these voting centers. One person indicated that instead of going to the voting center to vote, he was going to vote from home. The item of worry is that in order to vote from home, he has to use a computer, virus, or hack the machine. The worry is, if he votes illegally through his machine at home, how many other people can come through the same device and vote? And where will these people, if it's possible, be located? Another item of worry and concern with the coming election is that there's still vote-by-mail votes, and you can vote on the last, you can register and vote on the last day. Another item of worry is you can mail in your ballot on the last day, and six days after the election, those ballots, if you don't get there, they can still be counted.
Thank you. If I could have Craig, Yolanda Alanese, Arnold Sacks, Lydia Ponce, and last call for Matt Fisher, Michael Day, and Ethne. If I called your name, come on up. It's Craig, Arnold Sacks, Lydia Ponce.
Ponce is a man who solicits women. I play a lot of Scrabble. Lydia Ponce, Venice, California. Last year, I witnessed Ms. Martinez being very, very abused verbally, to the point of it was in my mind's eye as a woman, as a grandmother, as an auntie, as a mother. She was being very sexualized, and I saw a lot of nothing being done about it, and I didn't hear anything being done about it. I wrote a letter to the DA, and it was about the conversation that some of our community shares in using their First Amendment right, and I'm all for that. But that was hate speech, and I cannot come here and feel like I'm put on a machine from Princess Bride and having the life sucked out of me. It takes me time to recover when I leave this building. So what can we do to support ending that? Because we have children sometimes here receiving their proclamation, their recognition for something awesome, to have to be subject to that. If they hear that at home, that's one thing.
Thank you, Lydia. Thank you for talking...
Let me know.
Thank you for talking about sanity. Thank you. Last call for Matt Fisher, Ethne, Michael Day, and also Arnold Sacks, Craig, Yolanda Alanese, and Victoria. Arnold, go ahead.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 13. So, Mr. City Council members and city attorney, so I'm looking at all these different committee meetings that are going to happen today: transportation, health education, neighborhood parks, information technology, and public safety. And FYI, can you believe it? There are, on community impact statements, 22, 26, 45 no community impact statements. No community impact statements on 45 items that are going to appear before the city council, and there are four community impact statements out of only four. So 45 no's and five yeses. So what the fuck do you do if you have no community impact statement? You say, "Time's up."
Could I get Craig, Yolanda Alanese, Victoria, Javier, and Sean Murphy? Craig, Yolanda Alanese, Victoria, Javier, and Sean Murphy. Come on up. State your name.
Victoria. I just would like to start off by saying I don't appreciate being censored, Ms. Neary I have a couple of questions. So, it is said that we are a sanctuary city and that we are here to protect immigrants and immigrant rights. I would like to know why the individual responsible for the loss of vital housing for vulnerable children at Safe Haven in 2009 and behind the abuses of immigrant children documented in the L.A. Times at Casa Libre in 2019 is being allowed to participate in discussions about the well-being of our unaccompanied children. I would also like to know, is Peter Shea under the investigation by Attorney General Becerra's office? And I would also like to ask Ms. Neary Martinez...
Thank you. Next.
Hello. I wanted to know exactly...
State your name.
Oh, Francisco.
Francisco.
Javier.
Oh, Javier. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, do you know why Safe Haven, a shelter for homeless immigrant youth located on 252 South Rampart Street, was foreclosed on by the city of L.A. back in 2009? And then through a CPRA request, we obtained the transcripts and other relevant documents from the city foreclosure on the property and found some troubling info. Do you know that Peter Shea and the Center of Human Rights were responsible for its foreclosure and the loss of housing for vulnerable children? Could you also please explain why the individual responsible for the loss of vital housing for the vulnerable children of Safe Haven in 2009 and behind the abuses of immigrant children documents in the L.A. Times at Casa Libre in 2019 is being allowed to participate in a discussion about the well-being of our unaccompanied children? Why are they letting them open up more shelters and, you know, why are they letting them be a part of it? And like, why are you guys letting this happen?
Thank you, Javier. Thank you. Sean?
Good morning, Madam President. Well, the Houston Astros got themselves in big trouble. I hope they get locked up in a cage. As a Dodger fan, I'd like that. I would like them to be locked up in a cage. Wilma Flintstone said a while back, lions, when lions roar, they get locked up in the cage, and the Houston Astros should get locked up in the cage.
Thank you, Sean. Last call for Craig and Yolanda Alanese. And Red Chief Hunt, give you two minutes. One minute for 36, and one minute for public comment. Two minutes. Clerk, two minutes.
First one would be the regular public comment regarding the meetings in Van Nuys. When I first came here in 2004, we had a meeting here every Friday over in Van Nuys, the first Friday. I would like to see that returned back to the schedule as a whole thing. I think Van Nuys is very important, things like that. Just to say more, I'd like the city attorney to weigh in on more of the issues and things like that, because you have the jurisdiction to do it. Like I said, if I can get all you guys to vote again, and I'm trying to restore City Hall back to its originality from 2004, where we were up on the screen and things like that, we wasn't so far apart and things like that. I think that's really important. I think you guys really ought to start listening, because if you guys really start listening, we had the best city council ever from 2004 to 2010 in the history of city councils down here, and I'm one of the pioneers. Thank you. Now I want to go into general public comment. I want to start my way...
That was your general public comment. So item number 36 now.
Oh, well, I reversed it, sir. Okay, well, general public comment. Listen here, we're here to do a good job. We...
No, no, you spoke on general comment. You have to speak on item number 36 now.
No, 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 no. I didn't understand. I thought I was speaking on 36 first. That's what I did. I took it in that term.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, because you sure don't want to argue with me about the First Amendment right to assemble down here. Here again, we have to do a better effort. I want to see all of these screens turned back to the public. This is our thing. We vote you guys in office. This is our tax dollars, and we need to be visualized on the screen. Ms. Martinez, I think you're doing a good job, and heard Wesson, that was a really good speech. You sounded like a politician again when I first came down here. We, the people, this is our house. This is not you guys' house. We vote you guys in office. The Red Chief Hunt, don't ever forget that.
Thank you. Now, we have Rob Quan for item number 36.
I've actually got a modest request on this item, and it's not necessarily related specifically to any action today. I think it's important to recognize that not everybody is aware that we are meeting in Van Nuys, and it would be really helpful if on the actual calendar, it clearly indicated in the subject that it was a Van Nuys meeting. It would be really helpful if on the agenda itself, it clearly noted that the meeting was in Van Nuys and was made prominently clear. I just know that over the last few years, there've been multiple occasions where I've accidentally come here and found a crowd of people, including journalists and people who should know that we're meeting in Van Nuys. Lastly, I just want to recognize yesterday's vote and the fact that we, as a council, hold Major League Baseball to higher standards than we hold ourselves. I look forward to Councilmember Sadio introducing a resolution requesting that Jose Uizar step down and Gloria Melina be installed as our new council member. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment, and that takes us to item number 36 for a vote. So Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll for item number 36. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
Oh, the desk is clear, sir.
Great. So, members, any announcements? Any announcements, members? Seeing none? Any adjourning motions? If we could all rise? Adjourning motions? Looking to my right? Looking to my left? Councilman Blumenfield's side? Nope. So that is, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, members.